All right, we're gonna try this again. Welcome to the Bartlett Planning Commission meeting. If you'd all rise to start with our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
If you would, pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this day. I thank you for the opportunity we have to gather and do the city's work, God. I pray that your blessings will be upon it. I pray, Lord, that you grant us wisdom as we do that work and that the decisions we make, you'll get the glory for. Lord, I pray that you protect all those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit. And I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Jay Kaufman. Paul Kaiser.
Here.
David Hunt. Jim Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Parsons. Alderman Young.
Here.
Mandy Young.
Here.
Curtis Sigler.
Here.
John Conroy.
Here.
And then we're gonna get a chance to look at the minutes for the last meeting. Are there any corrections?
I do have a correction, Mr. Chairman, on page six and eight. And I promise I read the whole thing, but my name was misspelled on page six and eight. It actually had Chairman Sigler Conroy. So they had both of us here.
All right.
That was all that I found in reading through it all.
All right, with that correction, can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, let's start with our new business. Public hearings for special use permit. Application to add a school use to an existing church use at 9375 Davies Plantation Road. First, we'll hear from Planning Director Kim Taylor.
Mr. Roy Lamica with EFI Global on behalf of Christian Life Tabernacle is requesting Planning Commission approval of a favorable recommendation of a special use permit to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for the existing church to expand its current special use permit to allow a school to be built on their property, which is located at 9375 Davies Plantation Road within the RE Residential Estate zoning district. The original SUP for the church was approved in 2012 and did not include a school. The site plan for the property was approved in 2015, which included an 18,600-square-foot church and a 12,000-square-foot storage building. The new conceptual site plan will add a 17,428-square-feet-foot school with a playground. Initially, the school supports -- initially, the school will support grades pre-K through third. Additional grades will be added later on. And the church estimates that a maximum of 150 students will attend at build-out. Surrounding uses include single-family homes, a museum, and another church. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in this staff report. Thank you.
Does the Board have any questions? It's for Director Taylor. All right, seeing none. Would ask with the applicant present. So please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Roy Lamica, 11213 Goat Drive, Arlington, Tennessee.
Have you had a chance to read the comments and conditions? Are you in agreement with --
Yes, sir.
-- both planning and engineering conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do not have a question, but I do have a statement. And I know this is looking at the site plan and the school and everything. And I like the layout, glad y'all are doing it. Just wanted to make sure, and again, this, I guess, this is more as FYI to the owner, that he's aware that he'll need to pull a state permit for doing a school, both with a state and for licenseings and for the permit. Okay, sure. That was all the questions I had.
Anybody else have anything for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start our public hearing. Any Bartlett citizen that wants to speak on this issue has a right to do so. The conditions are that anybody who wants to speak in favor can speak up to three minutes at a time with a total of 20 minutes in favor, and then we'll have those opposed. Again, the same rules apply. Three minutes with a 20-minute total. Did we receive any correspondence on this issue?
We received seven letters in support.
All right, thank you. All right, starting then of those who want to speak in favor, and anyone here to speak in favor of this application. All right, seeing none. Would ask if anyone would like to speak in opposition to this item. Yes, sir, come forward, please. Name and address, please.
Eric Gott, 3666 Ellen Davies Cove.
Thank you, you have up to three minutes.
I'm on behalf of the Homeowners Association, who is not contacted with this information about this site proposal and special use permit application. We have many concerns from several neighbors that we feel that should be addressed before the special use permit is amended or approved for change. And we'd like a period of at least 60 days to discuss with our neighbors and have a meeting and talk about the possible changes to the distinct nature and character of our neighborhood.
All right, and your homeowners association represents what area?
The Davies Plantation neighborhood, where this is zoned residential estate in our neighborhood.
Amen. Could I ask you a question? How would they be contacted?
We have a website, email, phone. There are numerous ways to contact us.
But they're not a property owner in and of itself. You know, we send out, and I'm not questioning, I'm just curious, how the city would know to send you something to the homeowners association? We send out this hearing to everyone around.
Right.
If the HOA does not have an address, obviously, you wouldn't get a letter.
We do have an address, but obviously, we did not put it out there enough to let everyone know that we would like to be notified if there's gonna be a major change to our neighborhood or surrounding areas.
Okay. All right, thank you. Director Taylor, would you come up, please? What's our standard with regard to an issue such as homeowners association?
I believe it's all property owners within a thousand-foot radius of, if they're within the city of Bartlett limits, are sent notification.
Which would probably be members of the homeowners association would have received knowledge in that manner.
Homeowners, you know, yeah. I believe the homeowners would be a part of the homeowners association, so, yes.
All right, thank you.
One more question, how far in advance do you notify them?
It is 15 days in advance.
Did anyone notify you from the homeowners association prior to this meeting?
No.
To find out a contact name or anything of the developer to reach out to them?
Well, the developer provides the radius map and the mailing labels to all those property owners as part of the application. And then we write the notification and we send it. We also post it in the Bartlett Express.
Right.
And then we also put it on the Bartlett website.
Yeah, no, I got that. I was just curious if anybody from the homeowners association or the gentleman who just spoke contacted you prior to tonight's meeting?
No, not me. Oh, did he contact you, Leslie? Leslie's shaking her head.
So I spoke to, I'm not sure if it was the president, but a member of the homeowners association who is curious about the application. At the time, we did not have all of the comments prepared. I informed them that they would be online after 5:00 on Friday for them to review. But someone from the homeowners association did come to the desk and speak to us.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did what?
Someone from the homeowners association did come to the desk to speak with us about this school SUP.
Okay, thank you.
And I would assume that happened today, Leslie, is that?
It happened last week before the comments were finalized.
Is she, okay, okay.
But we didn't receive any letters against?
No letters in opposition.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Kim. So anyone else here to speak in opposition?
I'm not sure if I'm in opposition or what position I'm in.
Excuse me, sir. Could I have your name and address, please?
Terry Brimhall. I live at 9250 Davies Plantation Road.
Yes, sir.
Probably the closest house or one of the few closer houses that would be in the same area. And I'm not, I'm not here to say whether I'm for or against what's going on. I am concerned. I didn't get any information about this going on. And if that's, how would I have received that? How would I have received that?
You should've gotten it through the mail, Terry.
Okay, I didn't.
But you didn't?
I did not get mail. But I do have on occasion people that help themselves get mail out of my mailbox. So I'm not real sure what we're trying to accomplish here. I'd just voice an opinion that, based on the number of people that are here representing the neighborhood, I'm not sure everybody got a notice. So I would like to have you all consider that, that there would be a notice and that more people within the neighborhood could have an opportunity to actually voice their opinion before we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is J.K. Lawrence. I live on Hillman Way Drive. And like Terry, I'm not sure I'm here to speak in opposition, but out of concern. I live in the first street that you pass from the church. And there is going to be a lot of increase in traffic because of this school, a lot more people in the neighborhood. And I guess my concern is that, like Terry, we were not notified in a timely fashion so that we could discuss it as a homeowners association to see exactly what's going on with this school. I don't have a problem with schools, I don't have a problem with churches. But when it's this close proximity to my neighborhood, I think we need to be fully informed either by our elected officials or by somebody as to what is being proposed and how that will impact our neighborhood. That's all we're asking, and that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, but can I ask you one quick question? But did you receive the letter?
My wife told me about a letter about two or three days ago.
Okay.
And that's why I'm here.
No, that's no problem. I just wanna make sure you did receive the letter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none then.
Somebody's coming. She's coming.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I live in the Davies Plantation area also. My name is Anita Brent, and I live at 8900 Ellwood Cove.
Excuse me, would you pull the mic down? Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Am I okay?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't receive a letter either. I found out through Facebook and through Nextdoor what was going on. So I just wanna say that. And just to agree with the last person that spoke is that my concern is about the traffic also that's gonna bring to the neighborhood.
All right, and you did not get a letter?
Didn't.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim, can I ask you a quick question? When the original, and this was before my time, when the original church came through for approval, I'm assuming it would've had to send out or they would've had to meet with the homeowners then?
Yes.
Or the homeowners would've showed up then like they did tonight?
Yes.
And I'm going to now ask the owner, did that meeting occur at that original meeting? And if so, then why didn't it happen for this?
I was here for the original meeting.
Okay.
There was quite a bit of opposition for the church being built at that time. Of course, the special use permit got approved.
Okay.
Usually, we recommend, especially on new builds, it's not a requirement that the developer have a meeting with the neighbors.
Sure.
Our requirement, they're showing a map up there of the vicinity, and it has labeled who all was contacted.
Sure.
Our requirement, I believe it's by law, is for that radius that you see up there.
Gotcha, okay.
So not everyone in the HOA typically receives a letter if they're not within that radius.
And that radius is?
A thousand feet.
Excuse me?
The radius is how much?
It's, I believe it's a thousand feet. That's the law, that's the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me make sure.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lysandra Warren Taylor, and I'm with the Davies Plantation Homeowners Association. I actually came to see Leslie last week, once we were notified, a letter was being sent around. At the time, there was no details, no information, so we didn't have anything to go by. Leslie said the information would be put up on the website on Friday about 4:30. I still called, still wasn't up. So we didn't have time to go over anything with our association, to inform them, to let them know about what was going on. So at this time, we are asking for more time before anything is approved, so we can get together as an association and see exactly what's going on. Thank you.
So can I ask a question, Leslie? And/or Kim? So the information was not put up on the website like our packet and everything? It was not put up till when for public?
6:20 PM on Friday. On Friday evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. I'm Amber Gott. I live at 3666 Ellen Davies Cove. And again, I'm kinda with everyone else. I'm not necessarily in opposition. It's just the homeowners association does have concerns, and we do have questions that we would like to have time to get addressed, where we can talk to the developer, talk to the church, and get some of these concerns of our homeowners addressed. And that's it. Just a little more time.
I do have a question. I know several of y'all have come up here and said y'all do have some concerns. Do y'all have a list of those concerns? Because we do have the developer here.
Well, so that's the thing. We haven't had time to meet with the affected homeowners to address it.
Okay.
Because we didn't have all of this information. As a homeowners association, we do have concerns, and we can get a list of those. But we haven't been able to have time to talk to the affected homeowners that are in that general area.
So you don't have a full list of concerns? You just have some?
Just some that the
Ideas of concerns.
Board has brought up.
Okay.
There again, we have not had time to have a meeting with the homeowners so that we can get kind of a feel of what their concerns are and get them addressed.
Okay.
And there again, we, you know, we don't know if they would support it or oppose it, because we haven't had the opportunity yet to address that. So I'm kinda with everyone else. If we could just have a little more time to get some questions answered, that would be lovely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none then, that would close our public hearing. Does the applicant have anything they want to say in response to what they've heard?
Caleb Adams, pastor of Christian Life Church, 4162 Swan Hill Drive, Lakeland, Tennessee. And I would like to address response to that. First of all, several weeks ago, I personally logged on to the Davies Plantation homeowners' website and sent a, I guess it's an email through the website, and received zero response. This isn't the first time we've reached out and got zero response. I just assume maybe it's not monitored. But in that note, I was requesting that someone come meet with us, happy to walk through to show them the facilities, answer any questions they may have. So that was done. Also, in the thousand-foot radius, I want to emphasize that the letters were sent. It was a total of 100 addresses within a thousand-foot radius. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions or concerns anyone has. And we love our neighborhood, we love the homeowners association, great people. But we have tried to do due diligence many weeks ahead of time and have received zero calls or stop-bys at the church to ask any questions. And we'd be happy to answer anything that was asked. That's all.
All right, what would be your position regarding a delay of this item?
We request that there not be a delay. The school use for the new building is just one use, but our church desperately needs it for Sunday school. Right now, we don't have a fellowship area, we don't have a suitable kitchen, so we're really pressed. We have a lot of needs for this facility, and we're hoping to get the plans approved and construction started early in the spring. And so, but the special use permit obviously impacts how we design the building and the final design. So a delay would not be good for our church, because we're on a timeline. We're hoping to get the school started in fall of '25. And if we're not able to start construction by this coming April, we will miss an entire year, just the way everything will fall out in the timeline.
Questions for the applicant?
Did I understand you to say that the final design wasn't done, and you weren't sure what the use of the building?
We have, yes, we designed the building to include the school use. If the special use permit is denied, that means that we would need to trim back the square footage. We don't need to build school classrooms if we're not allowed to have a school there. So we've got the architect, he's got to as far as he can go. Until we get this permit approved, and once it's approved, we'll proceed with the construction plans.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
I do, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Would a 30-day extension, 30 days, be a problem? I think 60 is a really unprecedented amount, but 30 days deferral, would that be a problem? Just 30 days?
Well, obviously.
To make sure the neighbors are comfortable with this and have some input?
It's very important for us to have a good rapport with our neighbors. And once again, we've sent everyone letters, we've reached out, it's been posted on Nextdoor and Facebook. It's, and once again, no one has come to express concerns. But we'll work with whatever we have to do. But it would definitely crowd us if we had to have a 30-day extension. But we will definitely comply with whatever's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we continue this to the January meeting of the Planning Commission and give them this opportunity. It's over Christmas, but that would give the homeowners association a time to meet with you folks. And it may come back as the same results then, but at least we will have granted more time for them to meet their requests. And I think it would be worked better if everybody's in agreement or everybody's in disagreement, but everybody's had a chance to discuss exactly what's going on. I'd like to make that motion, if I might.
And I'll second it.
One more comment on that, too, if you will. Yeah, I think this is a special use permit, so I think it's important not to rush this. And you want to have good neighbors, you want to, we need to have this carefully considered. Hope you
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Call a roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That item passes. So there'll be a 30-day delay. We will continue this. We will hear it in our January meeting. And we would ask that the homeowners association and the applicant, please get together and try to come to as much agreement as possible. All right, next item we have is a master plan application for the Hy-Vee subdivision located at the northeast corner of New Brunswick Road and Old Brunswick Road.
The applicant, Michael Rogers with Fisher &amp; Arnold, on behalf of the applicant for the Hy-Vee subdivision, is requesting Planning Commission approval of a master plan. The property is located at the northeast corner of New Brunswick Road and Old Brunswick Road, and it is zoned CH Highway Business District. The total area of the property is 25.72 acres. The master plan entails a three-lot commercial subdivision, with Lot 1 being 16.8 acres, Lot 2 being 3.03 acres, and Lot 3 being 5.88 acres. It is planned that Lot 1 will house a future grocery store, Lot 2 will house a convenience store, gas station, and greenbelt wetland area. Access to the site is proposed from four entrances on New Brunswick Road and one entrance on Old Brunswick Road. A 231-foot section of Old Brunswick Road at New Brunswick Road is under study for road closure. Staff recommends approval with conditions as listed in this staff report. The applicant, however, has been working with our engineer staff to amend some of the conditions. And therefore, I would like to turn this portion of the report and the conditions over to John Horn and with the applicant as well. Thank you.
So we've amended a number of the engineering conditions. And I know this has come at the last minute, but we've been working very diligently with Michael Rogers, who's Hy-Vee's representative, who's here tonight. So the revised engineering conditions that I handed to you a few moments ago are identical to the ones that were originally submitted earlier, with the exception of you're gonna see some comments that are in red that are with a strike-through to be deleted in favor of blue letters and sentences that are to be revised. And so we're in agreement with these changes as shown in this latest handout that we gave
Does anyone have any questions on these revised engineering conditions? All right, seeing none, could we ask the applicant to come forward? All right, seeing none, could we ask the applicant to come forward, please?
Michael Rogers with Fisher &amp; Arnold, 9180 Crestwood Hills Drive, Memphis, Tennessee. And I want to say I do appreciate that staff has worked hard with us and know it's been a difficult, it's a, it's a, it's a challenging site. A lot of challenges on it, the situation with Old Brunswick, New Brunswick have a stream through the middle of it that divides it with a green belt, which has caused some, some challenges with the layout of the site. And as John said, we are in agreement with his changes. There, there, there is one that I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to consider, an additional amendment. I know it's, John and I have talked about this a bit, and I know it's a little out of the ordinary for Bartlet's, I guess their common practice or their approach. It, it has to do with the sewer tanks. It's condition number six on the, under sewer. And what that pertains to is, as you know, this is in the Fletcher Creek Basin, which requires a sewer holding tank and a pump. As John has, I think noted with the, I think he noted it there in the conditions, we have already received approval for sewer connections for lots 1 and 2. That will be the two lots, the grocery store and the C store, which by the way are both, will be owned by Hy-Vee, developed by Hy-Vee. Lot 3 is a future lot that they will hold on to, eventually would sell and develop. They like to control it because they don't want anything that be competitive to their interest in their two lots. And so all of these lots would have, would be required to do a sewer pump, sewer holding tank and a pump. In this site, as you can see, the grocery store uses quite a bit of space. The C store, just the way it laid out where we had to do an access, ingress, egress, access, easement, you see, coming there off of Old Brunswick, getting you back over to New Brunswick. There's an area there that works suitably well for a holding tank and a pump there. And our preliminary design, just preliminary, that we've submitted, would have all the sewer graviting to the pump at that location, one pump, I mean, one tank, excuse me, one pump, and pumping it over back into the gravity, back into the outfall that crosses this property. We really would like to have one pump and one s- tank. And on all their properties, they set up a easements, restrictions, and covenants for their developments that shares. There, there's, there's always in a development like this, or most always in development like this, common interests, common things that have shared interests and shared responsibilities. For instance, the access drive will be on, is a private drive. It goes on parts of two of the lots, lots 2 and 3. However, the way they'll set it up in the covenants is the maintenance, ongoing maintenance of that road will be covered, prorated by all three lot owners when there is a future third lot. Same thing with the sewer holding tank. What the city of Memphis has already approved is connections for lots 1 and 2, and they've already approved the rate by which we have to pump and the timing of which we have to pump out of this tank is based on the calculated flows for the grocery store, the calculated flows for the C store, and an estimated calculated flows for Lot 3. It is clear, Lot 3, to be clear, Lot 3 is not approved for connection yet because we don't know what's going there. It'll have to come back. And if at that time they come back and they have sewer flows that's greater than what we've estimated and designed the system for, they would have to provide a separate tank and pump themselves for any additional that they need. So I, I had, I had suggested that if you look at condition number six, the first line obviously is fine. I had, I had suggested that the developer, obviously developer, will be required when we do final design to obtain approval of the construction plans from the city of Memphis and city of Bartlett, and that we will be required to submit to Bartlett an easements, covenants, and restrictions agreement that clearly delineates each lot owner's responsibility and share and ongoing maintenance of the system, which is to be, would be required prior to us recording the plat before the construction was done. They will clearly delineate that. And also, for some time, probably for a good while, there'll only be one owner, even though it's two lots, it'll be Hy-Vee. The city of Memphis said they anticipate this being temporary for seven years maximum. It's a very good chance, seven years, we're sitting here, we still just have Hy-Vee. We may have something come along in Lot 3. But it, it will be, but regardless of what happens, there will be agreement in place that would, that would require the required maintenance responsibilities from the, the property owners' association for these three lots. So I would, I would just request that additional amendment if the Planning Commission would so choose to grant it. But otherwise, we, we're, we're good with everything and looking forward.
You're asking us to approve something in the future?
No, 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 I'm asking-
And we don't have that ability to see the future. We don't have a clue what'll go in Lot 3.
No, we're, I'm not asking you to approve Lot 3. I'm asking you to approve a, one tank and one pump for lots 1 and 2 that we're coming, we'll be coming right back for, for final site plan and final construction plans.
John, how does the city feel about that?
How does what?
How does the city feel about that? Because I-
So in the past-
Mike said y'all have talked about it back and forth, so.
So in the past, what we've done is each lot is responsible for its sewer-
Right.
...commercially. So we've required in, say for instance, a three-lot commercial subdivision for each lot to have its own holding tank-
Okay.
-and it be platted that way.
Okay.
Now, and, and Michael is right in situations, commercial situations where you have multiple lots and you would have a shared parking lot, and that's, the maintenance of that parking lot would be a responsibility of a property owners' association.
Yeah.
You could have a detention basin or even underground detention basin where that would be shared amongst those entities. And what we feel is completely different is the fact that this is sewer. And this is a health concern. And we feel like it's better governed, maybe governed is not the right way to say it, but governed where each particular lot is responsible for their own holding tank. And so we don't think it's a good policy for us to get involved in sharing holding tanks by different entities.
I got you, okay.
Wouldn't it be a lot more difficult, say, two years down the road for Lot 3 to be developed? And they wanted to tie into that one tank? Wouldn't it be a lot harder to, to tie it in underneath roads and, and everything at that point than it would be?
No, for Lot 3, there would, there would be no more difficulty than what it is now because we, the line that we'll be laying, if you, I think you can go to the utility plan, if y'all can pull the utility plan up, which is again, a preliminary design that would have to be finalized. If you pull it up, it, it's kind of hard. I should have brought a pointer with me. But if you look there, there's a line that, there's a sewer, gravity sewer line that'll be coming out of the grocery store, going along that access road. It'll then come down, if you go down a little bit, it then come across there. There'll be stubs. We showed three. We shouldn't have showed three because one of them's a green belt. There'll be two stubs to this Lot 3 because we don't even know if Lot 3's going to develop as one lot. They could possibly come back and subdivide Lot 3. That's a possibility. But we've stubbed gravity sewer lines to those properties for them to tie on without getting in the road. However, they do not have, again, they do not have approval from the city of Memphis for connection yet. They would have to come back with a plan, just like we have, with the calculated flows based on that plan to tie in. What, what I said we have done, and that could change, that'd be all right if we need to do that. We have sized our tank for an estimated flow for general commercial here that just in case, when they do come, they get approved from the city for sewer connection and their flows are at or below that estimated flow, they would not have to put a new tank on. They would go in. But as a part of the covenant restrictions, as a part of their purchasing of this land, they would be responsible for their share of maintenance. When, when there's nothing, right now, when, when it first happens, Hy-Vee's gone on every bit of it, including the undeveloped lot on Lot 3. And so even though it's going to be a prorated share for Lot 1, a prorated share for Lot 2, it'll be really Hy-Vee. But nobody, none of us know the future. 10 years down the road, if it's still there, the city hasn't taken it offline, and Hy-Vee sold the grocery store or sold the C store, then you'd have two different owners, but you'd still have, because that would be perpetual with the land, you'd still have the agreement for what the share is in maintenance. If this lot developed and they had more, let's say a restaurant or something came or a couple of restaurants, and it was more flows than what this tank was designed for, then yes, they would have to, as part of their sewer approval through the city of Memphis connection, they would have to provide an additional tank and pump on their lot, but they still would not have to get in the road. Their connection would still be to that gravity line. So it, it just may mean they have to add more storage.
I guess the difference here, and going back to you, John, is say if they've got a maintenance agreement for the driveway or cross access or whatever, that can be done by covenant or an easement. But what you're saying is that since this is more of a health issue, the city's stance is that each lot should have its own underground tank?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, I would, and, and I understand that. I totally understand where John's coming from, but from a health, health issue, as, as I shared with John, I have worked on multiple, multiple, uh, commercial lots. An example is Treveer in Germantown, where you've got one underground detention system that's handling the detention for all three lots. And there's a, even though it's on one particular lot, it's all shared, there's shared responsibility in it. And drainage is a safety issue as well. I mean, you get flooding or whatever. So a, a little bit of different situation in sewer tank. And this is the first time I've dealt with a sewer, well, the second time, the first time I ended up not having to have a sewer tank because the city fixed the sewer downstream. At first, we thought we was going to have a holding tank. But this is the first time I've dealt with it in this Fletcher Creek Basin. But again, it, it's, it's like any other, any other shared responsibility. It legally has a requirement. And I understand legally requirements. That could be a situation for Bartlet. But, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, and we certainly could put the language in there, I think Bartlet does, can have the rights to go in if, let's say if you had a, you had a pub, let's just say a residential neighborhood.
All right, excuse me. I think we understand the request.
Yeah.
Is there any more questions from the board?
Is there a reason why Hy-Vee wouldn't combine the two lots?
I, I think they, they generally keep it separate. They generally keep it separate. Well, they keep it separate even though they own it and plant it. Again, they don't know the future. And, and what he said is if they got ready, if for some reason, say the grocery store was not doing well, another grocery store wanted to move in, they wanted to sell the lot. Granted, they could come back and subdivide the lot, but the general issue you have with a grocery store, some grocery stores, they would not want to be involved with a lot that has gas tanks on it for instance, tanks. So they prefer, and all, even, even in, even in sites where they only have two lots, is their, their C store and their gas station and their grocery store, they still subdivide it into two lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything else? All right, thank you.
Are there any other issues that you have concern with?
Well, I mean, John was asking about item seven. The, the two issues, the two issues that Hy-Vee and my conversations I had with them over the, since last week, since we had conversations over the weekend and today, the two issues they had was the holding tanks, was the holding tank. But it, but really even more than that is they desire to have full-term movement out of this commercial drive on the north side simply because 99% of their commercial vehicle, commercial traffic there, they get a, you know, a half a dozen, 10 trucks a day on, on a maximum. It's going to come from 64 up north and it's going to go back to 64. And if you go right out only, you got to go up into the residential and everywhere. There's no way to get back to commercial. However, I do, I do agree with John and understand that the close proximity to Wolf Lake Drive does create a left turn, left turn conflict potential. And, and I, we've talked about, I've thought about ways you can do it. I think that conflict potential would be greatly reduced in the future if a traffic signal's there, but who knows when that's going to happen? And so I'm, what I've come through today is we couldn't figure out something that makes sense and works. And so between now and the board, I, I want to kind of look at it some more with, with Hy-Vee and figure out for something there because, you know, it, it is a safety issue. I've thought, can we put warning signs up or something? I, I do know, I was out there Friday afternoon looking. There's very clear visibility from Wolf Lake Drive to where this drive's going to come out. There's no visibility issues. But nonetheless, if you had, say, a truck coming out, or even a car, even a car coming out of picking up their groceries, a car that real quick shoots out into that continuous left turn lane to head south while one's coming out of Wolf Lake to head north in that continuous left turn lane, it does give them a short period for reaction. There's no question about that. So I'm, I'm going to hold up on that and see, you know, where they're at. But those, those are the two big issues that are concerned to Hy-Vee.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board? John, my only concern is that the city of Bartlet does not get into a dispute seven years down the road about whose holding tank is this. And that's not where the city needs to be is trying to solve that. So it needs to be very clear and very spelled out in any contracts and so forth. Don't want somebody down here, well, somebody said seven years ago. I ain't got a clue seven years ago.
Right.
So. All right. I need a motion.
So, so, John, help me. We, we talked a little bit about this, the holding tanks.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the city's position, we'd rather each site have its own. And, okay.
Just want to get one thing clear in my mind too. So we can't even do two lots. It's got to be three lots. So we get two, two holding tanks might be better than having to do three. Is that a possibility?
Say that again, Paul.
So could we do two lots? Is that out of the question? Is two holding tanks better than three? And maybe subdivide that second lot later?
You know-
Is that actually no go?
Mine and Michael's discussion, we talked about, could Lot 1, which is the grocery store, and Lot 2, which is the fuel station, be combined into one lot?
That's what I just asked you.
And I think there was some concern that that doesn't meet Hy-Vee's needs because they want the ability to possibly sell off the fuel station lot. And so I know they, they want three lots. They want three lots there. They need three lots. And so then the question is, is can we as a city allow what we have typically done, what we think is in best interest of everybody is for, if you got three lots, you have three holding tanks. Each property owner understands they're responsible for their holding tank. And so now Lot 3 would be platted but not developed. So what we would do is even though a holding tank would not be constructed there, we would plat that, make it a requirement for a holding tank to be installed there when a site plan came in, unless the sizing of it that Michael did of it initially is big enough to accommodate Lot 3.
Seems reasonable. Is he not agreeable to that, the applicant? That seems reasonable to me, just when they develop it, then it's on the plat, so it's developed and they do it at that time.
Well, I, I think the difference is here, what, we have designed, a preliminary design in our intent to move forward with final design, that tank does have capacity for Lot 3, but it's one tank that has capacity for Lot 1, 2, and 3. You could have, you could have one tank that's capacity for Lot 1 and 2, and then when 3 comes in the future, they have their own tank. That would be more, that would be more likely. And it's possible even with our, our plan, our hope is we've, that we design it with enough storage that Lot 3, when it does happen, we have capacity. But if it did not happen, if it turned out that, like if you look in, I don't know if you had it, but in the sewer calculations I did, I, I used and assumed general commercial and came up with some flows for Lot 3. If Lot 3 develops in a way that has greater flows, they still would have to do a separate tank on their lot for the additional storage. But if they come in with the same amount or less, they could just tie on to the sewer and go in. But of course, they'd still need city of Memphis connection approval because we only have it for lots 1 and 2. What John is saying, what the city's normal standard is, is that Lot 1 here, the grocery store, would have its own tank somewhere and pump. Lot 2 wouldn't have one right now because we don't know what's there, but it eventually have to have one. And Lot 1, 2, I mean Lot 3, Lot 2, the C store, would have its own tank. What that's going to mean, if you, if you look at the sewer flows, interestingly enough, the C store, it's a C store with a coffee- the C store, it's a C store with a coffee shop, gas station, the C store actually is a greater generator of sewer flow than the grocery store, if you look at it, and so the proration of responsibility would be based on sewer flows, not on size of lots, sewer flows, and they have a greater responsibility, so what happens if we do?
Excuse me, excuse me, we've leveraged this more than enough.
Wait a minute, let me, I need to hear what, I don't understand your statement that the C store, I guess that's a gas pump store?
It's, it's a Hy-Vee, you know, like a lot of the grocery stores, Kroger, a lot of them have their own little convenience store with gas pumps, this is a convenience stores with gas pumps and a drive-through coffee, coffee.
And they're gonna generate more sewage than the grocery store?
Yeah, it would generate more sewage flow than a grocery.
Can you tell me what size tanks you're proposing, or tank?
Sure, it's in this, let me see, I've got somewhere here the calculations. That seems right, I want to look here real quick and make sure I'm remembering that correctly.
While he's doing that, can I ask, John, what does the city want? I mean, we're going back and forth with this for a good 20, 30 minutes, but what, what does the city want, bottom line?
A holding tank on each lot.
Okay, thank you.
So three lots, three holding tanks.
Thank you, that's all I need to know, thank you.
So, so it's, but the answer to your question is eighteen thousand gallon, eighteen thousand gallon tank, and to give you an idea, the C store will generate 12,120 gallons of that, that tank, the grocery store will generate a little over 3,000, close to 3,100. So, so what you're gonna do is you're basically, the pump that we're gonna put in for the C store is almost gonna be the same size it is for all three lots, the pump's gonna be close to the same size, but then we're adding another tank, smaller tank and pump for the grocery store, so, you know, it's like anything else, it's economy, it's economy of, it's the cost of econ, the economy cost that you combine it into one, but there's also the ongoing maintenance and headache, plus finding a place in the grocery store where you can have a large easement to put the, put the tank out there and the pump, is just a reason that Hy-Vee would obviously prefer to be one. The, we've just assigned 1,600 gallons for lot three, so that's where 18,000 gallons come from.
So if there's no other questions, I'd like to make them, do you have another question?
Question for John, I mean, we've talked so much about the sewer, I have a question about the physical site plan. Can you explain to me what's happening at Old Brunswick Road there? I mean, I'm seeing a cul-de-sac like there, a little, are we shutting off that road?
Yes.
Coming from?
Lakeside?
Lakeside, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the concerns that everyone agreed with on the front end was the inefficiency of one, New Brunswick and Highway 64, that intersection, which is made even worse by the intersection of, I'm gonna call that Old Brunswick Road for coming from Lakeside and New Brunswick, and there's been a lot of crash reports there, and so our engineering staff and Michael, along with Hy-Vee, worked to discuss with T-DOT to get, I'm gonna call it Old Brunswick Road closed, so, and they're receptive to that, and so the goal was to put a cul-de-sac right where you see it, right at the Old Brunswick entrance to the C store, right there. So that's gonna be the goal, that will be coved off there. If you've ever tried to make a left out of Old Brunswick onto New Brunswick?
That's the worst part there, when I drove.
It's dangerous, and not only is it inefficient, it's not safe, and it's not even safe to make a right turn, and so we feel like this greatly improves that intersection.
So my concern is, is why is that a full access drive, unless I'm missing something?
It's not, that's not a full access drive.
No, that's, that's hatching showing the pavement that will be taken up, scarefied and removed, and it'll be grass, it'll be grass.
It's gonna go away, yeah.
Yeah.
So the only way into the C shop is the second one, right there, and then, and then that one has a traffic signal, okay.
The C store does have a right in, right out only.
That, that concerned me, because I thought you had two driveways back to back there.
No, no.
Well, I found them and I could tell that was being hatched or removed. Okay.
And the drive, the drive is coming up from the cul-de-sac and then runs over to, runs over to the, to the New Brunswick there, where we, where the traffic study says a signal will be warranted, and we do want to put a traffic signal, that will be dedicated as a access ingress egress easement to the public use.
Okay, all right, that is my question, thank you, John.
Any other questions from the board?
What's the middle ground? I mean, I appreciate Hy-Vee wanting to come here, is the middle ground to approve two tanks right now, or one, one big tank for lot one and lot two, and then when lot three, whatever happens there, comes along in whatever length of time, then that's a negotiation between the folks that are maintaining the great big tank, or does the city require them to have their own tank on lot three? Like I say, I don't want to delay it at all, I want to move forward and, you know, let's be proactive and come up with a way to help Hy-Vee, you know, support the city of Bartlett.
And I, and I do appreciate that, and, and, Hy-Vee's position is definitely one tank for lot one and two, it's gonna be their lots, basically. If, if we say, don't, don't even put any storage in there for the future commercial, and they're on their own, they would be fine with that. Ideally, it'd be fine if we put a little extra in there and hope it is sufficient for when they come, but you're right, it'd be their responsibility. I feel like what I, what I was proposing, a condition, a condition that we would submit to staff, the easement restrictions and covenants that delineate the share, and, and one of you brought up a good point, we don't want, what if down the road, down the road, the City of Memphis gets their act together, or whatever they're doing, the sewer, and says, okay, these holding tanks can all go aside, well, you can't just leave a tank there, there's a certain way to, certain way, we could even include that in there, what's to be required there for that. If you look at design, what we're designing, I'm designing the gravity lines to work without the tank, but they'll be plugged, forcing the flow to go in the tank, so alls you have to do in terms of sewer flow is come back, plug the lines going into the tank, remove the pump, and open up the plugged lines. In fact, when that happens, there'll be sections of line abandoned in the grocery store, but we going directly into the sewer outfall without even going all the way around to the tank. But, so, so we've designed it, we've designed it preliminary and final design will be the same, to work with the current temporary condition, which we all don't know how long that is, how temporary it is, maybe seven years, maybe 25, and we've, we've designed it to work if and when that temporary period ends, where you can do away with it, but again, that's gonna be set in the documentation of the landowners, the responsibility, not only for the maintenance of it, but for the abandonment of it, if and when that time comes.
And I'm not saying that that may not, can work, however, there's a lot of situations that, in our city, that we get involved in, where regardless of how well it's spelled out in a covenant or on a plat between two property owners, that we still get pulled into it, and it's, we get complaints about commercial wet lakes, where the maintenance, or whether it's a commercial or residential, where the property owners association or the homeowners association wants the city to fix it, and it's one thing if it's erosion or a parking lot in a commercial development, it's another completely different thing if it's sewer. And again, have we encountered that so far? No, but we're on the front end of these. Unfortunately, because of the sewer situation, we're having to, or we're having to install or have our developers install these holding tanks, and so to say it's a messy situation, that's understatement, and so we're on the very beginnings of these, and so, once again, we think it should be the property owners' responsibility to maintain these individually, and at times it happens where property owners butt heads, and who do they want to fix the situation? They want, sometimes they want the city to step in to fix the situation, and to my knowledge, we don't have any commercial detention basins that are covered by POAs, where if there was a problem with the detention basin, it would become a health issue like flooding. None of ours are set up like that. I've never seen any parking lots where there's shared ownership of the parking lots, where that becomes a health situation. These could become very quickly an unhealthy situation with raw sewer, if you have two property owners that don't agree, or one doesn't agree to fix their share of a sewer holding tank, and, and that, that's where our concern lies.
Let me ask you a question, John, the, the C store, that everyone's calling it, and the Hy-Vee are the same property owners?
I think if they were the same property owner.
Are they not now?
Well, they are, they, they are, but, but in fairness to John, they are, and that's the plan, they have no plan, let me be clear, they have no plans to sell it, they just like to subdivide it if ever the time comes they want to sell it, so in the future, it's two separate lots for the simple fact that they could sell it, but the truth of the matter is, if they came through, if they came through and did it as one lot, and had two, they had a grocery store and the C store was on one lot, and then 15 years down the road, if they still got that sewer holding tank, they decided they wanted to sell it, they would just be coming back before you to subdivide, subdivide it, is what they'd be doing, and you'd already have the tank there.
And at that time, we could make the owner of that property decide?
Exactly, is that, you think that might be receptive to Hy-Vee at that point, if they got ready to sell it and subdivide, sell off a section, the understanding that if the more, if the sewer situation is still the same situation and a holding tank was required, then they might have to install a second holding tank?
No, no, they wouldn't want to do that if they have a tank that's already handling what they have, why would they install a second when it would be unnecessary?
Whether they wanted to or not, if that, if that maintained that property owner's responsibility.
Well, I, I think that their position is that the, the legal binding document that is a legal document will hold the two owners, whether it's the same owner or two different owners would hold them to their responsibility. And I understand, you could, you could have people, but you could, you always have the possibility of somebody, let's say, going belly up, and they're not out there and they're not doing anything, and, but there's somebody that still owns the land, but you could have that with the access easement, too, which can be a safety issue, too, because it's gonna be dedicated to public use, and, you know, if they're sitting out there leaving huge potholes that people can run off into the green belt or something, that's, that's an issue, too, but that's covered by, that's covered by the property owners' association covenants, restrictions, and easements.
Can I make a motion, if there's no other questions?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to leave as is by our city and approve it the way it is written, where each one has their own basin.
To move to the second, is there any more discussion? Call or roll, please.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
No.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That item carries. Move on, next item we have is a construction plan application for the Shimali subdivision located at 7771 Highway 70. Director Taylor.
The applicant, Mr. David Bray with the Bray Firm, on behalf of the applicant for the property, is requesting planning commission approval of a construction plan for the Shimali subdivision. The property is located at 771, 7771 Highway 70, and is located within the CH Highway Business District. On April 3, 2023, the master plan for this development was approved by this commission. On February 16, 2023, the BZA approved lot width variances to allow 57 feet of lot width at the road frontages on both lots, instead of the required 80-foot requirement by our zoning district. The entire lot is 1.05 acres. Lot one is proposed to be 23,085 square feet, and lot two is proposed to be 22,783 square feet. Access to the sites will be from a new curb cut on Highway 70. The construction plan shows 3,143 square feet of dedication for Highway 70's right-of-way, a stream buffer along the rear property, a detention basin, and an additional landscape screen that separates the commercial property from the residential properties at the rear. The owner, Applin, will be responsible for all landscape buffers. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with conditions as listed in your report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor? Okay, seeing none. The applicant, come forward, please.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North. We're in agreement with all the conditions except for the one requiring the TDEC NOI. The site's 1.05 acres, we got a green belt on it, we're gonna be under an acre disturbed by the time we get to the end of it, if, obviously, if we need a permit, we'll do it, but I don't believe we're gonna need a permit at this time.
Okay. So, so what do we strike? Are we waiving, are we waiving a condition? John?
It's condition 20 under the engineering comments. And it doesn't have to be, if, if we could just add, if necessary.
Yeah, that's right, if necessary.
All right, questions for the applicant? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move, we approve with the recommendations from staff. Say it.
Call or roll, please.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Next item is a final plan application for the Cray subdivision located at 7410 Shadow Lawn Road.
Now we got a final plan for Shimali.
You missed the Shimalis.
Did I skip one?
Okay. Shimali is next.
Yeah, we did the master plan, now we gotta do the final.
It's the final plan for the Shimali. Oh, did I put backwards, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Number four.
Apologies.
Why can't I find it? Okay, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Again, this is a conjunctive request, what item number three that you just heard. The applicant is Mr. David Bray, representing the property owners of 7771 Highway 70, and the request is for the planning commission to approve the final plan for the Shimali subdivision. Again, the property is located within the CH Highway Business Zoning District, and this is a request for a two-lot commercial subdivision, again, with lot one being 23,085 square feet and lot two being 22,783 square feet. Access to the lots will be from a new curb cut on Highway 70. Again, there is a landscape buffer along, proposed along the rear of the property, as well as a stream buffer and a detention pond area. When the applicant moves forward with the site plan application, we will also request that they add the usual streetscape buffer along the frontage of Highway 70. Staff has reviewed this application, and again, we recommend approval with conditions as listed in your report. Thank you.
Questions for Kim? Thank you. Applicant?
Again, David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North, and again, the same request, just that one condition, if we could add if needed, and it's also from number 20 on.
it's also from number 20 on this one.
Thank you.
I have a question for David. David, so on this site plan I'm looking at, and it may have been on the last one we just looked at, but it looks like there's going to be a 30,500 square foot building on this lot?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Do we know what that, what's going to go there?
It's titled by the Architect's Meat Shop, but it is a deli, small grocery, specific grocery, basically think Charlie's Meat Market type place.
Okay, okay.
But this application will come back for a planning commission site plan approval.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Thanks, David.
I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Call or roll, please?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
And that motion is with item 21 being if necessary?
20.
Or 20, if necessary?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next item then is number five, final plan application for the Crey subdivision located at 7410 Shadow Lawn Road.
The applicant, Mr. Tim McCaskill, on behalf of the property owners, is requesting planning commission approval of a final plan for the Crey subdivision. The property is located at 7410 Shadow Lawn Road, and it is zoned RS15 residential single family. The applicant is requesting to subdivide 10.22 acres of land into a two-lot subdivision, residential subdivision, with Lot 1 being 7.19 acres and Lot 2 being 3.03 acres. Both lots will share an 86-foot wide access drive from Shadow Lawn Road. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in your staff report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, we have the applicant, please.
Tim McCaskill with the Reeves Firm, 1680 Poplar Avenue. And I'll be real brief. Both of these houses exist, and there's no improvements planned, and we are in agreement with the recommendation and the conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I was about to say, thank you for your comment, because that was my question, was, was anything planned?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I get a motion?
Move we approve with recommendations from staff.
Second.
Call or roll, please?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
All right, moving on, number six, we have a site plan application for Dunkin' Donuts located at Appling Road and Highway 70.
The applicant, Mr. John Granberry with Granberry and Associates, on behalf of the developer, is requesting planning commission approval of a site plan for a new Dunkin' Donuts. The property is located at the intersection of Highway 70 and Appling Road on Lot 3 of the corner shops of Highway 70, which is next door to Dollar Tree. The property is currently zoned CH Highway Business Zoning District. The site itself is 28,540 square feet, and the proposed building will be 1,100 square feet. They are proposing 15 parking spaces, one of which will be van accessible. Right now, they are just 0.25 short of their green space area, however, the applicant has agreed to remove either one or two parking spaces, which will generate enough green space to help them meet the 35% threshold. With that being said, staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor? Right, seeing none, we have the applicant come forward, please.
Good evening, John Granberry with Granberry and Associates, 1685 York Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, for the record. And we've read the conditions, we're in agreement with all of them. The site plan that is on the screen does reflect the reduced parking and the additional green space, so that we do meet the 35%. We submitted that after, it was, you know, submitted Friday, so. But the, the only other thing is, condition number three, the same thing that David Bray had in regards to the TDEC permit, if required, it's, the site's under an acre, it's 0.66 acres, and if, of course, if it's required by TDEC, we'll submit SWIP and get the permit, but if not...
If required, we can add that.
Yep, and that's all.
All right, thank you.
What are the hours of operation going to be for this Dunkin' Donut? Do you know?
I do not know.
Do you know if it's planned to be 24 hours?
It is not planned to be 24 hours.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Move we approve with the recommendations from staff, and that hiccup about if required.
Second.
Call or roll, please?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Next item is a site plan application for Club Car Wash located at 8274 Highway 64.
The applicant, Mr. Bruce Lynn with TTL Incorporated, on behalf of the developer, is requesting planning commission approval of a revised site plan for the Club Car Wash. The subject property is located at 8274 Highway 64, and it is the former location of the Abuelos Restaurant. It is also within the CH Highway Business Zoning District. The site, site itself is currently 46,565 square feet, just slightly over an acre. The proposed building will be 5,028 square feet, and they will have 86 total parking spaces. Some of the parking spaces will be located on the site itself, and others will be shared with the existing shopping center that, that is there. The green space meets the requirement, it exceeds the 35%, and therefore, staff recommends approval with the conditions as listed in your staff report. Thank you.
What restaurant used to be there?
Abuelos.
Did, did you say 86 parking spaces?
Yes. 86 parking, with the shared agreement with the shopping center.
Wow.
86 are being removed. Oh, I'm sorry. That's removed. You're correct. They're proposing 21, 22 actually, with the van accessible.
I was going to say, it's going to be quite a car wash.
I'm like, wait, wait, wait.
Kim, I have a question, and this may even go to engineering. When they come through, make this property saw cut that existing parking lot, and the car wash does their development and puts in a curb and gutter between where that separation is, where the, where the Lowe's parking lot is and their drive around is. It just appears that, you know, okay, it's just saw cut, there's no notes there, or I didn't see any on what I saw. Are they going to put any curb and gutter back along the Lowe's parking lot, so cars aren't just driving across the Lowe's parking lot and into the car wash property? Does that make sense?
I don't think there's any plan to it, but I think right now you can do just that.
Well, you can drive across the parking lot, yes, but now we're going to have two piece, two different properties, and you're going to have the drive around, the car wash, and they've got a curb and gutter, it appears to be, when you come out of the car wash and you can drive around. So I'm talking about the property line that separates now those two pieces of property, which is going to be green space, right there where the arrow is, and go straight up, where they saw cut the property of the Lowe's parking lots. It used to be a back-to-back stall, you know, 20 feet on each side of that center line. So you removed one side of it, what's going to have, are they going to put a curb and gutter? Is Lowe's going to do that, or is the car wash going to rebuild that curb and gutter? So again, it separates the two?
I see what you're saying, yeah.
If not, somebody parking from Lowe's just could just drive right on into the car wash parking lot?
We didn't pick up on that, we'll have to check into that.
Okay. Again, it's just a separation of the two lots, that's all.
All right, any other questions? Kim, you have anything else?
No, I don't. Thank you.
We have the applicant, please.
Bruce Lynn, TTL, 3080 Liberty Hills Drive, Franklin, Tennessee. And we're in agreement with all the comments, and we'll be receptive to what was just discussed.
All right, well, all right, let me ask then, I'm, I'm not sure, on the, on the last issue that was brought up, what's your position?
We're receptive to anything that engineering has. I, I understand the comment, and that was just an oversight.
Possibility of adding some curbing, curbing between the proposed site and Lowe's.
Yes.
It may be a possibility that we require that during the review process.
All right.
Are y'all not worried about oversaturation of car washes down Highway 64, further down?
I mean, that'd be a question for the developer, I, I'm not really sure.
Are they, I mean, are they aware of it?
Yeah, yeah. And I know Leslie or someone else also talked about it, and I put that forward to them, and they are still pretty keen on this area, so.
So what makes this more unique than the other 50 car washes we have down Highway 64?
Your guess is as good as mine. It's really like, the whole experience behind club cars, it's a club. So I, I mean, you have not only the car wash vacuums, it's, it's more the same as everything else, but they do have merchandise, and it's a little more, yeah.
I agree with Curtis, that we've got to do everything we can to avoid a free-for-all. I mean, we, you know, we think back a meeting to Five Way and no curbs, that's a free-for-all, so whatever we can do to help our very diligent Memphisian Bartlet drivers get in the right direction, then the curbs would help that, I think. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move we approve with the recommendations from staff, and then we get some curbing added.
Second. Call or roll, please?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
No.
Curtis Sigler?
No.
John Conroy?
Yes.
All right. Carries.
Item carries.
Yep.
All right, next item, the site plan application for Chipotle located at Stage Road west of Kirby Witten Parkway.
The applicant, Mr. Taylor Webb with Rockfield Engineering LLC, on behalf of the property owner, is requesting planning commission approval of a site plan for a 2,330 square foot new Chipotle restaurant with a drive-through window. The new restaurant will be located within Stage Center at 6600 Stage Road, within the SC1 Planned Unit Commercial Development. The site itself is 21,403 square feet, it is not a separate lot, it will be a leased area via the property owner of Stage Center. The total parking places that, spaces that will be removed due to the development of, of the restaurant is 48 regular spaces. However, they are proposing 22, I'm sorry, 23 spaces. The green space is, is less than we would normally allow, however, it doesn't matter at this point because they are building on top of asphalt, so the green space is already gone at that location. The applicant will also be sharing additional parking spaces with the shopping center for any overflow, overflow parking. Staff has reviewed this application, and we recommend approval with the conditions as stated in the staff report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor?
I have a question for you, Kim. Approximately on, well, on the west side of this building, in that row of parking, there's two white dots there, and approximately in that location, there is a sight light for the shopping center.
A what?
A sight light, a light pole?
Okay.
For the, for, and there's two handicap parking spaces that there as well, that's being removed because of this development.
Mm-hmm.
And so my question is, are those two handicap spaces going to be relocated over, or does this parking lot have enough handicap spaces? Because I'm assuming they were showed there because of Family Dollar or the Walgreens that was there before.
So...
And so there's two handicap parking, or at least it's painted on the pavement.
So they are adding back two handicap parking spaces? So if they're removing to...
Yeah, but they're, but that was just it. They, they need two for themselves.
Right.
But those two were probably dedicated for the Family Dollar that's there now, or not.
Dollar General.
Dollar General. Excuse me.
Yes. We'll look into that. We could always get with the actual shopping center owner to ensure that he is providing the handicap accessible for the rest of the shopping center.
Yes.
Typically, handicap spaces are supposed to be located nearest to the front entrance of any store.
Sure.
So, yeah, we will look into that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other question? This property owned by Ray Gill?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Taylor? All right, seeing none, the applicant come forward, please.
Good evening, Taylor Webb, Rockfield Engineering, 1355 Linfield, Tennessee. Yeah, we're agreeable to all conditions. The handicap parking spaces, this site is overparked by about 120 lots, and the accessible spaces are at the 2% mark, so it's already in excess of generally what you would need for the square footage. There's a bay of, the parking just north of where we're improving?
Yeah.
There's a bay, I believe, of either four or six accessible spaces, and then also to the south of the Family Dollar, I think there's another bay of four to six accessible spaces that are all well within the, I'm, I'm actually surprised those two were there, they weren't serving as good a function as...
They're for some reason.
Right.
That's all I ask.
Checking a box.
Just checked out.
And the only other thing is regarding the, the fire suppression, right now I'm showing a fire line coming in with a hydrant to service it. They may not need that, it will probably be a dry chemical fire suppression, apparently you don't want to spray water on a grease fire, so.
No, you do not.
So I just wanted to make sure nothing we do here locks in the fact that we're having, but I don't think it would, the way I read it, and the end, that's all I got.
Well, the Fire Marshal or Fire Chief's back there in the back room, so he could answer the question, but I would concur.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Call or roll, please?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Alderman Young?
Yes.
Mandy Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
John Conroy?
Yes.
Item carries. We've got three more items. Anybody want to take a break, or should we keep rolling?
Press on.
All right. Item number nine, then. This is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment, smoke shop and tobacco store.
This proposed ordinance, which is ordinance 2308, is an ordinance to amend the Bartlett zoning ordinance by adding definitions such as smoke shop, tobacco store, and to amend our current use chart to require a special use permit for, in order for the planning commission to be able to condition, instead of just allowing these by right. Within your ordinance report or proposed ordinance, you can see that the definition has been added for smoke shop and tobacco store. And then also attached is the use chart in our zoning ordinance. And I guess you have to look under the institution section and then the top of the page, well, right here, it says Article 5, Page 41. We've added, we've added the tobacco store, I'm sorry, Page 42. We've added the tobacco store and smoke shop to the use chart and it has an S indicating that a special use permit will be required in the CG, that's the general business area, and the CH Highway Business Areas. And it is not allowed any, in any other zoning in our ordinance.
Questions for Director Taylor?
And again, just to clarify what you said, I'm just going to restate what I thought I heard you say is that if they're, right now, the way it's set up, if they go into a place that's allowed, they can just go to the building department, secure a building permit?
That is correct.
And go into it.
Yeah, typically, it's a tenant finish. They go in, they redo the interiors and they move in.
And if they're not doing anything on the outside, they don't have to come to the planning commission or any other board?
Correct.
Okay. But now they will have to come through the required boards for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And you will be able to set conditions upon them.
Okay.
Or even not approve them.
And will that go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
Yes.
Which will be a public hearing as well?
Yes. All of these ordinances will have to be final by the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay.
We're looking for your recommendation to the, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
But I mean, when they are final and one of them comes in?
Yes.
They will have to go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for final approval?
That is correct.
And that will be a public hearing?
Yes. All special use permits require that. You'll have actually two. You'll have one here.
Yeah.
And then you'll have one at the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, other questions?
Move we approve?
I second.
Call a roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. All right, next we have the second of three proposed amendments. Front of us for a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Director Taylor?
This is ordinance 2309, an ordinance to amend the Bartlett zoning ordinance to add definitions, which includes the hookah lounge and other smoking lounges. And it would also change our uses permitted chart by requiring hookah lounges and other smoking lounges to obtain a special use permit. Again, within the body of the language of this ordinance, we have the definitions that will be added. And then in addition to that, the use chart, which is also attached to this. And this particular one is on actually Article 5, Page 41, where the use has been listed. And again, requires a special use permit in the CH Highway Business Zoning District. And that will be the only area where that use will be allowed in the CH District. Again, we're looking for a recommendation to put before the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And again, special use permits do require two public hearings, one here at the planning commission and one at the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a silly question. Where is the CH Highway Business Zoning District?
Well, it's mainly along portions of Highway 70 and Stage Road.
So that's the only places, the hookah lounge and smoking lounge?
Other than that, it won't, it will not be allowed.
We will not allow it?
Right.
Unless there's one already open.
Do we have any hookah lounges and smoking lounges that have come in?
We do have, we do have a smoking lounge and it is in CH right now, I believe. It did come before this board.
Right.
And we, we stretched the ordinance under, I think it was bars or something, because they were serving alcohol with theirs.
But have we had any come in?
Okay, we've had them come in and inquire at our desk.
Right. We haven't had any come in and just...
Not to the planning commission.
Like I know we've had bake shops and smoke shops just come in, in our, in like shopping strings, right? And open up and not come in front of us. But we've not had any hookah lounge or smoking lounges come in that haven't come in front
Only the cigar lounge that you've had.
Right. They've all come in front of us, is what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
We've not just had any open up.
No. We've had inquiries about opening them.
So why is this needed, I guess, is my question?
Because we've had inquiries about them.
And we'd like to control where they're going.
Yes. Yeah, instead of stretching the ordinance and saying, you know, luckily, the other one was serving liquor.
Most of them do.
So, well, if they serve liquor, then either way, they're going to have to get a special use permit. But what if they don't? What if their whole thing is just smoking?
It's, I don't personally agree with this one, so I can just, I mean, y'all can. Because if we've done our research into hookah lounges and smoking lounges, then we should know this. They all have other things there. And to control it into a certain area, I don't think that's right.
Other questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move we send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Second. Call a roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
No.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes.
All right.
Item carries. All right, we have one more proposed zoning ordinance for recommendation to the Mayor, Board and Alderman concerning discount stores.
Sure. Ordinance 2310 is an ordinance to amend the City of Bartlett zoning ordinance by amending Article 1, Section 2 definitions, by adding the definition of small box retail stores, liquidation stores, liquidation warehouse sellers, and to amend the use chart, which is Article 5, Chart 1, by adding these uses and restricting them by requiring special use permits, just like the other two ordinances. Again, we have added the definitions for these different types of bargain retailers. And we've added into our ordinance use chart, which is... 42, Article 5, Page 42. And with that being said, again, it will require two public hearings, a special use permit to be heard by the planning commission, and then you would forward your recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. And the reason for this is that we have a saturation of dollar stores. We have the community wanting to change the ordinance. And so that's why we are moving forward with this request.
Questions for Director Taylor?
So that I can understand this, so you're, the definition of small box retail store is anything less than 15,000 square feet?
Yes. And that's after researching across the country how they are defining them, the different types of discount or bargain stores. A lot of them just have a general term bargain stores, but then they break them out into these different square footages because we are talking about different things. You've got bargain bin stores.
But then you have like Auto Zones and you have other stores.
That's not, that's just regular retail. We consider that general retail. So there's general retail and then there's like Dollar Tree, Dollar General, those types of stores. This has been reviewed by our city attorney, all of them were reviewed by our city attorney for any changes that he recommended.
Okay, all right.
If I had, does I have a recommendation? On AV41, it says liquidation stores and warehouse sellers. Just using charts, especially in the old days, I prefer that the charts match up exactly with the amendment we're passing. So to have, because it doesn't say liquidation wholesale, where it does say liquidation warehouse sellers, it says just warehouse sellers. So it'd probably be easier just to have two separate additional listings there as opposed to the one that's AV41.
Oh, we can just add that in there.
Yeah, I think that that's better.
Okay, yeah.
I think.
We can just add that in there.
I think just for clarification. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, for clarity, what are we adding?
He wants to make sure that within the use chart, we call out all of the titles. So liquidation stores, liquidation warehouse sellers, small box retail stores. All three of them are in the, in the box.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Taylor? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Wait, just to clarify, so we're going from two different new uses to one consolidated use that lists all?
No, we're just fixing, amending the little chart.
We're just adding a word. Because adding a word, definition match.
I'll do it on my end and give it to you.
All right, are we good?
Yes.
I move we send her favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
I'll second it.
Call a roll, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Alderman Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. Item carries. Do we, had anybody sign up to speak at the end of the meeting?
We had Mr. Gott who spoke during the public hearing, but I didn't know if you still wanted... Okay, he spoke during the public hearing, so he said he was good.
And we're good?
Yes.
All right, with that, we're adjourned.